Everyone, the clock says it's five thirty, so we'll start this work session. This work session this evening is between the Petersburg Medical Center Hospital Board and the Petersburg Borough Assembly. This is an annual event, so maybe to start off, if we started at the end of the table there and did introductions, so we're kind of know everybody's names, if you would, please.
Ben Kuhn, Dawson Construction.
Jay Farmwalt, Project Manager with the hospital.
Roy Roundtree with Petersworth North Architects.
Mike Hasbrook, Hospital Board.
Kim Simbahan, Hospital Board.
Heather Kahn, Hospital Board.
Marlene Cushing, Hospital Board.
Jared Cook, Hospital Board.
Jason McCormick, CFO.
Phil Hofstadter, CEO.
Bob Lynn, Assembly.
Donna Marsh, Assembly.
Mark Jensen, Borough Mayor.
Scott Newman, Assembly.
Jay Stanton-Greger, Assembly.
If no, we're, can put a name with faces.
I'm guessing is going to be the, the primary part of this is going to be centered on new facility. And new facility with specific areas. What my agenda here, and so some updates from the last time we met in 2023. I believe that was February sixteenth of 2023, we met last time, and we've had some updates and progress since that time that we'll, we'll provide. B is the project delivery method and the project model. And we have our, our senior project manager here, Jay Farmwalt, who's, who's here in person. Thanks, Jay, just going to talk a little bit about that. Budget and total project cost and projection, design and construction timeline, construction budget timeline. And then we'd spend some time with financial planning and review, the capital costs for the project, and then a focus on sustainability. And Jason will provide a lot of content, and hopefully we'll have some good engagement and conversation around that. I wanted the structures, sort of the, the, the presentation. Yeah, if you can switch it to just a high-level overview, and really not so that all of us as subject matter experts are not talking at the board or talking at the assembly. It really is to engage some, some conversation and discussion on any of these. I can't have a presentation without talking about the mission. These are the things that I, I hold near and dear, and, you know, those are my guiding principles. And really, it's excellence in healthcare services and a promotion of wellness in our community. And also, we have our vision and values along those lines. But I think about our mission often, and it's the driving force that, that our, our facility has and our, and what we're here for. Go ahead and move next slide. And we do our strategic plan every five years, and we just redid the, the last November manager retreat. We went through our strategic plan from the previous few years, and we went and we refined it. We wanted to make sure that it was focused on what the board and what the staff and what the community, taking it all together and, and putting it into sort of five key steps. And those are really around patient-centered care, workforce wellness, community engagement, and financial wellness and the facility. A lot of these are same, but we changed the, the language a little bit, so they're a little more meaningful. And I'll highlight the community engagement. You know, previously, that was just community education, that was the goal. And engagement means more, that we're not just, again, talking at people. We're, we're talking with and having a discussion around that. Coming out of COVID, those are things that we really identified as maybe weaknesses, and we wanted to make sure that we, we, we improved on that as a facility, as a staff, and as a community hospital. And then financial wellness, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about the struggle and coming out of COVID on the operational side and what that looks like and what the future holds. And, and again, I'm going to rely on Jason to talk in detail on that. And then, of course, the facility is, I left it as facility because we also have our old facility, which we have to maintain, and then we have the new facility, so I didn't want to just say new facility. We still have to manage and, and operate our old facility. Right, next, next slide. Just, I like visuals, so, you know, I think a few years ago I did graphs, and it was hard not to fall asleep with graphs, so, you know, just, it's all about people. And one of the things that we were doing this past year with patient-centered care is improving our access. So access to primary care, access to specialty care. We had a large, you know, turnaround with a number of specialty clinics. We have dermatology clinic, we had, we have optometry, we had scope clinic. That was a big one, the scope clinic was, you know, getting that restarted. It's been done in the past and getting that restarted has been pretty, pretty great. We have, it's a collaboration between our, our staff. It's a huge effort of our nursing staff, and then we work with search. And search has been a great partner, and it's Dr. Garrison has come up, and she's wonderful. So we've had a good, a good start with, with collaborating with partners. Next slide. So we're workforce wellness, that's really around our workforce. What are we doing to help retain and, and make our staff feel valued? One of the things that, that came out of the manager retreat was just training. You know, we're, we need more training in, in many different areas. You know, you know, also with things like mental health first aid. We had a, a high number of mental health issues in the community. There was a lot of outreach and struggle within our staff. And so we were trying to make things as available and as open as possible. We have something called BetterHelp, which is a, we've been using that for the past few years, and, and that's just making that available barrier-free. So anytime that staff member needs to reach out, they can use it. It's a telehealth, behavioral health service that we have available. And then we also provide some trainings. Our wellness department has been really instrumental in providing some trainings. We also had our physicians and nursing staff go up and provide additional training and emergency preparedness, or emergency, in the emergency room, I should say, on some, some of the skills for, for physicians and nursing. Okay, next slide. And then, of course, community engagement. One of the things I'd like to pull out here is in your packet on your sheet is a, is a, I think it's on the second page. There's actually a firm, we, we hired a firm last year, and is with some of the funding that we received. And, and we wanted to, it was a professional research firm, and we wanted to find out, you know, how the community felt about the new facility, a number of different topics related to the hospital. And so this firm, they, what they did is they, between February twenty-eighth and March sixth of last year, Lake Research Partners conducted and moderated one qualitative board, and they, they selected twenty residents from Petersburg. And these were not healthcare workers or their family members that were included or excluded. I wasn't even part of it, I didn't know it, they just ran with it. And then they, we had some questions that we, we wanted answered. And this highlights some, some of those findings that they came out with. It's a thirty-page, thirty-six-page document. You know, the, given the anonymity of the people involved, we didn't want to publish that, but this is a good summary. It really talks about, you know, the, one of the highlights is the, the support for a new facility was pretty strong among this. And then they have a, a nice summary in the back on sort of the SWOT analysis, which is, you know, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and I believe they call it challenges instead of threats. So one of the things that we, I would like to just highlight out of here was, coming out of this was an MRI unit. So if they, if there was a strong feeling that if there was a new facility, they wanted to see an additional service, we, you know, birthing was discussed during that service, having gone away. And we actually used that as, as one of the, you know, reasons when we had the opportunity to create a new service line with the treasury funding, that MRI came up, and we, we knew that that was something the community needed or wanted. And so we put that into our, our goals when we had the opportunity to do so. And that came right directly out of this research report. So I think it's important, you know, it's one of the things that's really hard. You can't do it a traditional way. They couldn't just do phone calls, telemarketing. It's not, we don't have a sample size that's big enough, so they really had to do a, a very enhanced focus group to be able to conduct that. And it was over a series of days, it was pretty, pretty involved. All right, next slide. I think this is my last slide, and this is kind of a, a picture of the way we were approaching healthcare. So, you know, this is a blurry image of, of a bird's eye view of the hospital. You know, we have our main hospital in the, in the center of that with our compass there, with the long-term care staff and staffing to the right in our facility, and then the scoping clinic staff to the left there, and then surrounding that are, really is these activities we want to create and healthcare delivered outside the facility. And so the idea is that we're not just a hospital with four walls, and we don't do anything beyond the four walls. We want to be able to provide services out into the community. We have a home health program, we added adult day. We have the Kindersgad program to help with, you know, outdoor child, and it's a strong component of wellness around that. We have our falls prevention program, which we received the grants, so we're providing opportunities out in the community to support that. And then we have our wellness department that does a lot of the, a lot of these things related to activities and wellness in the community, including things like the health fair, which are coming up this, this year as well. So that's a high-level overview. I love this area, and some of those amazing days when it's not raining and, you know, slushy, there's just some amazing views, and this is up top here at the, on the Ravensbridge Trail, which is one of my favorite, favorite trails, so. In any case, that's my, my high-level overview. I'd like the last slide here, I'm going to turn it over to Jason. But before I do, does any, anybody have any comments or anything we want to talk about or discuss between our hospital board and assembly?
Did we, did we want to serve any coffee before we get into the accounting? I just wanted to share with the board, both boards, assembly here, what has happened over the last four or five years as we've dealt with one of the most significant events of the last probably fifty years, the pandemic of COVID, and how that impacted the financial performance of the organization. Probably should have brought my binoculars. I'm, I'm going to look at the screen over here so I can see the numbers. I apologize, but I'll try to read those so that, that folks can see. So the first thing I want to focus on, you know, what has happened to our operating revenues since two thousand and nineteen? So there were basically about sixteen million, four hundred thousand in two thousand and nineteen. And those grew over the course of the pandemic in twenty twenty to eighteen thousand, twenty twenty-one to twenty-four, or excuse me, I need to go back, million, sixteen point four million, eighteen million, one hundred and sixty-two, and then it went to twenty-four million, dipped a little bit in two thousand and twenty-two to twenty million. And then we completed the audit just recently for the organization, so two thousand and twenty-three is at twenty-three million. So significant amount of, of change and of growth there. Some of it has, we've seen a roller coaster with regards to patient volumes. And as, as we'll talk about, right now, we'll talk about a little bit more towards the end of the, the, the training session here today about cost-based reimbursement. I just, I want to begin to implant in everybody's mind that healthcare is upside down. The, the way finances work from a traditional business, any other business, is exactly opposite of what you would see anywhere else. And you look at that and you would say, well, you know, why did it go from sixteen million to twenty-three million? Are we seeing more patients? Are we being paid more? What's the deal there? And really, it's, it's almost directly related to our expenses. We are cost-based reimbursed from Medicare and from Medicaid. And so in, in many cases, irregardless of the volumes of patients that we see, Medicare pays us based on costs. I'll have some examples later on, but I just wanted to point that out, that a lot of our revenues here directly correlate with our expenses, our changes in expenses. And we've known that over COVID, in order to be staffed, we've had to bring in a lot of either agency or to pay various incentives that were funded by the, the federal government. So we did receive substantial amounts of funds, all of healthcare did, to pay for, called provider relief funding, to be able to retain staff and ensure we could keep things up and operational. So it just is such a real odd time that, yeah, you know, back, I remember in March of two thousand and twenty, just federal government just started just dumping millions of dollars in every hospital's bank account. That then they came up with the criteria for what you got to keep it or use it for. But long story short is, by two thousand and twenty-two, you had to either use it or refund it. And we did a little bit of both. We had to refund about twenty-four million, or two point four million dollars, dealing with the, what was called the Medicare Advanced Accelerated Payment Program. They gave us, we, we applied for, and they gave us some funding for liquidity, but that was a loan and had to be repaid. And so here, this past year, two thousand and twenty-three, it, it was very much a shock for the board for the organization to see our cash balances decline. Would, they had been sitting in a very nice level throughout two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two with all of these funds in there. But as we used them or we refunded them in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, our balances came back down to what they were prior to COVID, in fact, just a little bit lower. So scary, scary for everybody. But the good news is that, over the course of two thousand and twenty-three, we have stabilized and that we, our patient volumes are increasing. And as I referred to, our cost-based reimbursement is a process that is about two years, about a year to two years behind. So just imagine, we have to incur our expenses this year, and then we file a cost report, and then that changes our reimbursement next year. And so the process lags. Medicaid's even worse, they rebase our reimbursement every four years. And so a significant change in, in the cost of salaries and benefits and those kinds of things can take several years before it catches up. But luckily, we did have here this past year rebasing for our Medicaid rate, and it went up between twenty-four and thirty percent, our reimbursement from Medicaid. And we finalized the cost report, and it went up as well. And so as you look here, the, the last thing I just wanted to emphasize is the operating income. You can see that prior to COVID, we were losing a little bit of money, four hundred and six thousand. And then we started gaining a lot, nine hundred and eighteen, and then two point six million. And then we lost three million. And that's really related to this, this pandemic and the provider relief funding and how it had to be reported. And so by the end of two thousand and twenty-three, we're, we're seeing down there on the, kind of the net, the cumulative impact over this period of time, we've sustained a, a loss of about six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. We're hoping by the end of two thousand and twenty-four, we're seeing positive financial performance this year. The, the patient volumes have rebounded and, and are up. Our cost-based reimbursement is catching up. All of the work that we're doing, outreach with the community in, in various areas, we're, we're seeing positive response from that. So the, the strategic plan that Phil has just been speaking about is impacting the wellness, the financial wellness of the organization. And we hope to see that by the end of two thousand and twenty-four, that we're, for the most part, financially neutral over this five-year period of time. Any questions with regards to our financial trend over, over COVID?
So on the salaries and wages and benefits, those, if I'm following the same line across, those had significant jumps. Could you explain those, please?
Yeah, we, we saw over the course of COVID, you know, lots of, there was a tremendous shortage of nurses and things of that nature, staffing in general, with all kinds of positions. And in order to be able to retain staff, in order to have even contract labor, it was necessary to increase funds. I, I wasn't here during those times, so I can't speak exactly as to the raises that were given or the incentives that may have been employed. But it was common throughout the whole industry that various special programs were put in place to ensure that we were able to retain staff and, and keep them throughout the COVID period of time.
We saw about twenty, twenty-two percent increases in, in salaries and wages as we were going from one year to the next, related to some of the inflationary adjustments. It was pretty incredible.
And then, of course, you know, the benefits that are related to that, the, the cost of health insurance. I'm, I'm certain the assembly has seen that, with their plan has gone up, so has ours. And PERS is directly related to the cost of salaries.
All right, should we, should we jump to, if there's no other questions?
Phil, if I, Jason, if you could, address the last audit report and the findings on that audit report, if you would, that the hospital got back.
Sure, we, we did receive a, a positive audit report. There was no concern with regards to the, the auditors in terms of the presentation of our financial statements or any, you know, going concern or any of those types of things. There were three journal entries that they recommended, required that we post to true up the numbers. One of them is an expected journal entry. It has to deal with recording the PERS expense transaction each year. So that's basically unavoidable. You know, they, the auditors begin the process, they request the information from the state, and then give us the journal entry. There was an entry, there was a glitch with our new accounting software system in which the beginning balances of the, of the fiscal year, we ran the routine, but they didn't record correctly, and it wasn't noticed until we started the audit. And so they, they pointed that out, and so we've put in place a mechanism to make sure that before we begin the audit, that myself and the controller will validate those beginning balances are correct. But we've also fixed, identified what was wrong with the routine of the software, and we understand that that's not a problem anymore. And then there was a little journal entry had to deal with the recording of our PTO balances. And it was, we, we, we knew that it was, we were researching the issue and trying to validate what the balance was. There were some discrepancies in terms of the information that we were getting from our payroll system. And so the auditors knew it, but by the time we completed the audit, you know, we, we gave them what we felt it should be, they agreed, but they also identified it as, as a correction. So those were the three journal entries. There, there wasn't anything with regards to our internal controls that they found were an, an issue or, or anything else. So a tremendous improvement. We're still working on a couple of recommendations from the previous audit, reducing our accounts receivable balance. We've had some good progress on that, but we're still not, I, I would say we're only halfway through where we need to be in terms of the improvement of that area. And then the previous auditor also recommended to, to adopt a more comprehensive set of accounting policies and procedures. And so now that we're past the audit, I'll be working with the team to implement those additional accounting policies and procedures.
So Jason, could you explain to me or to us what purchased services are? I mean, just like everything on the, every line has gone up substantially, but what, what is that actually?
Let's see, let me make sure. Are you speaking? Yeah, purchase services. A, a big piece of that does have to deal with our software system, that we, we purchase that through a, a subscription-based service. So I believe that falls to that line. It's, it's anytime that we outsource services. So our billing service called HRG, their expense would be underneath there. I think in, in some cases, legal would be underneath there. Our accountants, auditors, those types of fees are purchase, purchase services. And it, it may also include, I, I think the contract labor has to deal with when we have agency, but it could include some of our physicians that we contract with that come and provide services on site.
Typically, if you look at salaries and wages and contract labor, those would, you kind of want to see those equal out. So if you're low on salaries and wages, which is your full-time equivalent staff, your employees, your, your, your people that live here, and your contract labor is, is your physicians that you're hiring to, to come in as a locum stent, or a nurse contractor come in a locum stent. So you can see the number on the salaries, wages goes up a little bit, and then that contract labor should go down a little bit. And that's a, that's a, you know, you don't want to see those going up together. But I can tell you, the purchase services, you know, there is, there is a, like, the fees outside of Petersburg, where you have to get contractors or consultants, those things were out of control as far as cost. But we also purchased software services as well, just like Jason was saying. So there's a number of areas bundled into that. All right, thank you. So that's, that's our first section, and so I think we'll, we'll move to the new, new building development. And I will, yep, the next part, if we, the next PowerPoint, if we have. And I'll turn this over to Jay Farmwalt, who's been with us for a while now. He's been with us when we did the master plan back in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. And I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Phil.
Yeah, maybe you can just bring this a little closer to the, to you, too.
You can move that mic.
Okay, how's that? Thanks for the opportunity. Nice to be back in Petersburg, where there's not eight feet of snow like there is at home. So Phil asked me to review a couple of the key borough actions to date, because it truly has been a partnership. And some of the assembly members, I believe, are new, since some of these decisions have been made. So I thought I'd just do a very quick review here. Back in two thousand and twenty-one, there was a resolution passed by the assembly that directed PMC to pursue external sources of funding, obviously a requirement for this project. Bring the project to shovel-ready status, because that, in my experience, that's what attracts funders. If you can show some basic progress and declare your project shovel-ready. And then the assembly said, please work with potential contractors on a phased approach under the realization that eating the elephant one bite at a time was absolutely going to be required for a project of this sort. Then in two thousand and twenty-three, last year, the assembly took two pretty major additional steps. They approved the North Haugen project site and the concept of rezoning and replating that site. And we also made a presentation to the assembly last spring about the, what we call CMGC, Contractor Manager General Contractor Delivery Model with Dawson. And I have another slide here for those that weren't here for that fairly detailed presentation on that delivery method. We can hit a few highlights there, very different than a low bid scenario. And then you can see five other steps there that I've listed. Last February, the project was selected number one priority for federal funding. The rezon was approved this summer. The rezone was approved this summer. The plat was approved in September. The Rock and Road, the local earthwork contractor came up with a concept that would benefit the borough and the hospital project, developing the Borough Rock Source. So we view that as a win-win. And then I think the Borough just recently, this, earlier this month, ranked the hospital project number one on their new capital project list. So next slide, please. The CMGC delivery model. This is for complex projects like a hospital. This is the industry standard these days. Again, very different than designing something, putting it out to bid, selecting a low bid contractor and then going through the whole change order. We don't understand your plans, the bids or sub-bids are coming in high. And that's, that's an old model. Works well on very simple projects, but not for complicated projects. So the industry has moved, including the state and, and private entities. And even the federal government has moved to this CMGC model, which is you hire your architect, which the hospital did in the fall of 22. They get organized, they get started, and then very early in the design process, you hire a contractor partner who joins the team. They're selected based on competitive pricing information. You don't have full plans yet, but you can negotiate upfront profit and overhead rates. You can negotiate change order rates. So you can lock the contractor in on key rates. You also get a commitment from the contractor that they'll roll up their sleeves and bring great ideas to the table during design to save money. And, and it's an open book process. Once you finally get to the point where you want to sign them up for an actual cost to build the building, you get to see everything. You get to see all their numbers. You get to see all their subquotes. It's a completely transparent process versus a low bid scenario. So we get to see their labor rates. We get to see their labor hours. We get to see all their paperwork with all their subcontractors. And the theory is that that overall brings better value to the owner, having a true partnership on a complex project. So that RFP process was completed last year about this time. Dawson Construction was selected again with some competitive pricing numbers and also qualifications and experience. And so they're at the table now. They've been looking over the shoulder of the design team that is worth north. They're learning every day more and more about the project. They're bringing their ideas. They're helping with schedule and phasing and selecting key subcontractors. It really is a collaborative effort that eventually will save the owner money. There's no commitment upfront to giving them the whole contract. You know, once we get to key milestones, they submit a proposal like they did for the site work. And we evaluate that against an independent estimate and we issue phased notice to proceed documents for do X or do Y. Right now, the only one in place is the site work. The next milestone for this project will be based on sixty-five percent documents for the Wellness Center portion of the project. Dawson will submit a hard guaranteed maximum price. And we'll come back to the Assembly and say, here's the recommended price to actually build the Wellness Center building. That'll happen in a couple of months. So next slide, unless there are any questions for those Assembly members who didn't get the initial briefing on this delivery model, would be happy to answer questions on the fly here.
I have a question about the, originally we were talking about Rock and Road using or developing our rock pit and modifying our mud dump. Where the waste is going, is that still part of the, the contract, part of the moving forward?
Yes, sir, it is. So I know Rock and Road is actively working on that plan. And I've seen some preliminary numbers that would reduce the price of rock for the hospital project that would lead to a reduction in the guaranteed max price that had already been negotiated for the site work. So that would then reduce that, that contract amount, which would be a savings to the project. And then the other benefit is it improves the rock source for the city, for the borough. So again, we think it's going to turn out to be a win-win situation. Well, maybe win-win-win, maybe, maybe Rock and Road comes out okay also.
Sounded like a, a, a good idea to me when it was first presented a few months ago.
Yeah, it feels like a really great partnership. We're all concerned here, so.
Mayor Jensen, can, Mayor Jensen, can you hear me? This is Steve.
Steve's talking to you. Can you hear Steve?
Can you hear me, Mark?
I, I hear a little bit, but I didn't know if our voice is coming out of there. I guess it is.
Sorry, I just, I just wanted to tell you that we got word today that Rock and Road is starting on building the road necessary for this. So it's moving forward.
Good. Hopefully the weather agrees with him.
Yeah, that's always the key, right? Okay, next slide, please. So the Wellness Education and Resource Center, the WORK, W E R C is how the project team is referring to it. And I could talk a little bit about why that is a separate piece of the project. Now, Roy, the architect here, will talk to you more specifically about what's in that building. The punchline here is the Treasury grant, the $20 million from the Department of Treasury, which we were shortlisted for, had some strings attached. They had three bases they wanted PMC to touch in order to actually get the $20 million. You had to have a component in the building they were funding that talked about or that addressed, not just talked about, but addressed health monitoring. The second thing was education and training. And the third thing was they were really keen on, we want a public internet center. We want a place where the public can come and access the internet. And this was all tied to the source of this billion dollars that was appropriated with the American Relief Act. And Treasury is not known for capital grants. You know, they're, this Department of Treasury, you know, they're not a capital grant organization, but they got handed this money and they were tasked to put it out. They came up with these criteria. Originally, we had a small support building in the project concept design that would support the main hospital building. Also originally, the state said, of course, you know, this was all new and people were moving pretty fast. The state said, don't worry, you could use the Treasury grant money, the 20 million for the support building and the rest you could use for the main hospital. And then when that got submitted to Treasury, the Treasury said, no, we're not going to let you do that. You've got to spend all 20 million on the Wellness Center or take less than 20 million. And Phil said, I'm not taking less than 20 million. So the Wellness Center grew to nineteen thousand square feet to get as close as we could without doing something that didn't make a lot of sense to the $20 million figure. So it now includes Conference and Training Center, stuff that was in the main hospital building before. For health monitoring, the primary department or departments that touched the base that Treasury wanted are the Public Health Nursing Department and the Wellness Department. And then with respect to, see, health monitoring, education and training, the Treasury Department said we'd also be willing to fund the, an MRI suite, which they construed to be health monitoring because it's direct patient care. So it was a way linking back to Phil's comment about the community survey to get an MRI suite into the project. And of course, we added their sacred public internet center. So now there's a space in the building where the public can come in and access the internet and Treasury loved that. The current budget for the Wellness Center is 21.7. Again, it grew to nineteen thousand square feet. And Roy will show you some diagrams here in just a few, few minutes that shows you where that is and what's actually inside that component of the project. And so the funding is fully funded, 20 million from Treasury. The grant has been signed, executed. We've got the, actually, I think the first increment of funds from Treasury hit PMC's account yesterday. And then from the original HERSA grant, the eight million, right now we're scheduled to potentially use 1.7 of that to complete construction of the Wellness Center. There is still in this total budget for the Wellness Center, there's still 1.3 million of contingency. It's a little too early to give all that up. So again, one of the potential advantages to having the contractor at the table now is hopefully we won't have to spend down that contingency and we, and we surely don't imagine adding any scope to the project. So I think that there's a fair chance that some of that contingency won't be spent. And hence that 1.7 million from HERSA that's being used to balance the budget right now won't be needed. And then that money can slide back over to the main hospital project. Site work is underway, as everybody knows. Dawson anticipates starting construction of the work this spring, actual footings and foundations this spring. And the project would be complete in the summer of 2025. Any questions on the WORK building? Yes, ma'am?
So if I understand, the WORK building has to be completely completed before this, even the site work begins on the main hospital?
No, no. We have enough HERSA money that we can do all the site work now within the core permit that we've already obtained. The only piece of the site work that will be deferred is that about a third of an acre between the ambulance side of the main hospital building up to Excel Street. We have to get a separate core permit for that. And so that'll be held back. But right now, Rock and Road's contract is for all site work for both the Wellness Center and the main hospital building. And that then makes the main hospital shovel-ready.
The site work, if I understand right, will include utilities for both buildings?
The Rock and Road's contract does not include utilities.
Just the earthwork?
Just the earthwork.
So that's to come, the cost for water, sewer, electric is coming later?
That's, that's in the main building GMP that will be negotiated with Dawson for the WORK building shortly and for the main hospital, once we get the next increment of funds for the main hospital.
So by taking some of the room in the hospital, you know, adding certain functions into the WORK building, I'm not saying this very clearly, but is that going to reduce the overall size of the main building? Is that, you know?
Yes, yeah, yep. So in round numbers, the Wellness Center is now nineteen thousand square feet and the main building is fifty-nine thousand square feet. So the main building has condensed to basically just ED, ancillary support services, acute care nursing and long-term care. And a lot of support spaces like public health nursing, admin, IT, storage, conference, education, training rooms, those all move to
Warehouse.
Warehouse, the storage functions. And, and, and the new service, which is MRI, that all moved to the Wellness Center. One important footnote on the MRI is the design concept is many of you, I'm sure, have seen MRI modular units or trailer-mounted units. It's very common throughout the US where hospitals will bring MRIs that are pre-manufactured by GE or Siemens or whoever. And they're actually in modular units or trailers that can be moved around. They do it in Anchorage quite frequently. And the concept here is initially, the MRI would be over at the Wellness Center in a modular unit. Once the new hospital is complete, it'll be moved over to the east side of the main hospital directly adjacent to the imaging, the main imaging department.
Completion of the WORK building phase, there will be an MRI onsite.
Yes. So now, next slide, please. So a main hospital building. Some of the activities associated with the main hospital are complete. You know, the, the whole site selection, geotechnical investigation, survey, plating, some of the design work, we're at thirty-five percent design now for the main hospital. Core permitting, some of those soft costs are complete. What we need to focus on here is we need about 67 million to complete the main hospital building. The fifty-nine thousand square feet of main hospital building, about 67 million. And so where do we think that 67 million might come from? Hopefully, the state will be able to step up during this legislative session with the capital budget legislative grant. The ask was for 37 million. And that's kind of pivotal for the main building.
So with that being said, is there a fallback or just, you know, another revenue stream or what, where are we at if we don't?
I would, I mean, maybe Phil has a different answer to that, but my, my answer would be Senator Murkowski would be my first stop.
Yeah.
As I told, there's a, there's a couple. So when we talked with Senator Murkowski last year, she is supportive of the project. She gave us her initial eight million for appropriations and she was willing to put in some more, but she wanted some contribution from the state. So that was a, that was a, something that she had said with us when we met with her last year. The other fallback is USDA. I, I would prefer not to, they, they have a program that's called Direct Loan, I believe, or it's the Office of Rural Development. And they have a, it's really the only place critical or a hospital, rural hospital can go to to finance and get approval to finance low-interest loan for the remainder. Jason actually has done a number of these projects. It's very, they're very onerous as far as requirements and federal aspects of it. And, you know, that would be our fallback. But the, the whole goal, you know, from day one has always been, when I say phased approach, it could be that we have, we really do this in phases so that each phase has a level of completion to it so that we can have a structure that's not just sitting there non-operational. So that means getting the site completely ready, getting rock filled, getting, you know, a structure up there, but not just a structure where we're just throwing some steel down and have open windows. It's got to be shelled in. We, lucky, we got the Treasury grant. We pulled some space out of the main hospital building to put into there. And we got to get, now that's turnkey and that is really key. But there's some risk there because we could, if we don't get funding, then we have a building up here and then we got to operate down there. We're split a little bit, but you know, that's something that, that I think that that's not the end of the world. We have an operational building. I feel like that with an MRI going, we can, we can manage that. It's not a huge structure, nineteen thousand square feet. The phased approach would be that, that we, that we, that we built off of those in phases. But we have momentum. We have some, we didn't have 28 million a few years ago. We have some good funding stack. The goal, there's, and Jason's going to lead into a little bit why it's important, you know, from a hospital standpoint, it doesn't just it doesn't just, from a cost analysis standpoint, when you have a new facility, there's really a strong return, a much, much stronger return for that than even, than an aging, fully depreciated facility. Much less that, you know, the other thing to remember here is, you know, we, we, there will be a come a time when that, that building will, there'll be a catastrophic failure and there'll be no hospital. I mean, that is what's at stake here. So we have to remember that when we're going through this. But the phased approach allows us to sequence those. If we can get a funding stack where there's thirty seven million, I don't know, Jay, if you want to talk about that a little bit, but that's really to get shell and core so that there's actually a structure up there, a building and structure up there that won't be impacted by weather that we don't have something that's just sitting there while we do the remaining fit out on the last phase.
Yeah, it's a great point. So back to the phased approach that the borough expressed interest in originally back in twenty twenty one. Site work shovel ready. Now, the Wellness Center, you know, that kind of materialized out of thin air, right? So let's call that phase two, I guess. Phase three, with hopefully state capital money, state capital grant money, shell and core of the main hospital itself. At that point, there may be funders, lots of funders like to be last in, you know, ride in on the white horse and declare victory, right? So you got a Wellness Center with an MRI. You've got a shell and core of a main hospital building. And then what agency wouldn't want to contribute to the last approximately thirty million to make everything final, right? So this thirty seven million for shell and core of the main building is kind of the critical tipping point here. The other thing with respect to Senator Murkowski, I think, my personal opinion, just a personal opinion, she started this with her eight million dollar HERSA grant, right? I would hope that she would be motivated and be innovative in ways to help complete the stack on the back end.
You know, and just to touch on, to go back on that, the USDA does have the loan, direct loan program for rural hospitals, and it's designated direct funding for that. But it's just, it's a resort I don't really want to go get to, but it is there. So it's like there is, you know, we could, we could fill out the paperwork, fill out the application. I talked to Robert Chambers here in the state of Alaska. We are, you know, there's no reason why we wouldn't be able to do that. Talked to the national office. Also, we would be eligible for that. So it's certainly something, but it is more of a financing kind of situation, you know.
But the USDA program that Phil's talking about, they also have some grant money. So, I mean, the strategy here is, you know, get as, aggregate as many grants as we possibly can. And Jason will talk about how that really helps the cost report. Really helps the cost report and hence the reimbursement rate. And there are other players listed here, you know, Denali Commission still has a lot of infrastructure and Jobs Act funding. They got a two million dollar cap, but their cycle for twenty twenty five is about to start. So why not try to get two million from them? Why not go to the Rasmussen Foundation? They love to be last in and fund medical equipment. They love that. And so it could be, and Murkowski and Peltola, as we've already mentioned it, the last increment after the state for the shell and core, the last increment thirty some million could be a patchwork of one, two, three heroes on white horses. Next slide, please. So Roy is going to talk about that, yeah, the design.
You'll let me go?
I'm going to let you go, sorry. I went a little long.
All right. Okay, I'm just going to talk about some of the changes that have occurred since in the last year or so. As you can see from the site plan, we still are, we still have the main hospital that wraps around what we're calling the Knoll. Is that spot up there where the old water tanks are, that you've got the beautiful trees? We're still keeping that intact. The service yard now separates the new enlarged resource center, the work. And you can see we'll have a common service area that will serve both buildings and some connecting walkways that for different departments that have been moved to the work. The main entry drop off is still off the main access road. And we've moved more of the parking in front of the hospital project, basically to to make the site development plan more condensed, more consolidated. And you can see on the top of that screen, we still have the ambulance ER entrance off of that upper level because the site slopes up. We have basically two onsite or on-grade entrances. And the upper one is the pickup and drop off for LTC residents, and then it's the main ER entrance with some parking up on that upper end. This still shows the long-term goal of connecting to XL. And that's actually where our electrical is going to come in for the main hospital off of XL. But we're going to need to go back and get a revised core permit for that piece of it. Next slide. This is the work building. The plan on the left side is the first floor. And you can see in this, in this plan, the support spaces that we've moved. The great thing about the grant, it said, as long as you provide these functional areas, you know, the internet, the community room, the health monitoring, as long as you do those things, we don't really care what else you put in there. So that allowed us to move some of those departments that existed in the hospital, but could have, you know, been next door, just as, just as easy as being inside. So the brown color on the lower right, that's the maintenance department. The purple color on the upper left, that's the material management, all the supply warehouse. The green is the morgue. The MRI is on the left of the lower floor, the purple. And then the blue is the front. And then we've got the wellness department on that first level. On the upper floor on the right, we have, we have the dark blue, which is the internet. Or excuse me, the internet's downstairs, the upper floor, we have two community rooms. Again, as Jay mentioned, those were going to be in the hospital anyway, but because the Treasury Department had the grant, we moved them into that. Retitled them a little bit. The lighter brown color upper left was the public health nursing. And then we moved two other departments that we felt were remote enough to be there. And the upper right corner is the light green is the information technology. You know, server rooms and then the information technology department, which we needed for the, the computer infrastructure in this building anyway. So it's going to be sort of dual duty. It will, we'll be able to staff that to be able to equip that in anticipation of the hospital coming online. So it'll be a nice transition. And then the dark green is the administrative areas that were in the hospital, which we felt could move. Anybody have any questions about the work building before I move on? Yeah, March?
So it looks like with the twenty million dollars, the work building was expanded to be right at that level and not exceed it. Is that correct?
That was the idea, yes.
That was the strategy, right?
Okay, somewhere, and I've done a little bit of reading, if we're critical access hospitals, is there anything that the federal government requires on total square footage? I was thinking, and it was perhaps that February meeting last year, one of the architect teams, members from the architect team, I thought, said seventy thousand square feet was this magical number. I myself, in my research, couldn't find anything other than individual rooms, patient rooms, et cetera, had to meet certain square footage requirements. But is there an overall?
No, there isn't. We build that total from a sum of the parts. So, you know, it's very specific about, you know, inpatient rooms, ER treatment, procedure rooms, it's very specific. And once you put all those things together, you end up with the total. Now, if you design it efficiently, your total is less than if you design it very inefficiently with lots of corridors and things. It'll grow. So as an architect, we really strive to be efficient and not provide more space than, than we need to because it's expensive. So. If we go to the next slide, the main hospital, by moving those departments to the work, we were able to really consolidate the design of the main building and really make it smaller. As Jay mentioned, it's about fifty nine thousand square feet now. You know, in the big picture, the work building is a less expensive building. The main hospital is a very expensive building just because of the infrastructure that you have to build into it. So by growing the work building, we were able to save some of the expensive square footage in the main building. So it's a way to balance that budget a little bit better. This is the first floor. The light blue at the bottom of the screen is the main entry and lobby space. We still have it zoned so that really the downstairs is the outpatient portion. The dark green is PT. We've got some, the kitchen and food services down there. That's the light green right in the crook of the, of the plan. To the right of the main entry, the orange is all the outpatient clinical areas. And then as you move farther down, I would say the back of that orange area is where we're setting up all the specialty treatment and physicians. As they come to town, they're using that portion segregated. So most times, the main clinic will all be on the front half of that. As you move farther up to the right, the the yellow is violets, very well-designed area. She's here to testify to that. And then the purple is the imaging. And so those two departments could be accessed from the ER through an elevator that comes right down for the patient treatment from those, from that department. There is a door at the far upper right of the purple, which is the imaging, and that would lead out to where eventually the MRI would be placed. So it'd be right there in that same core. It would be colored purple at that point. We do have some administrative registration check-in. It all happens right off the main lobby, the dark blue to the right. And then as we move upstairs, next slide. The purple is the long-term care. So again, when you come up the stairs elevator in the middle of the, of the V, you go to the left to long-term care. And we've got those distributed out around the perimeter. Some look to the, to the wooded knoll, others look out to the, to the south. And then the dark red is all inpatient acute care rooms. And again, they're zoned so that some of them are isolation and some of them are more general acute care. And then at the far upper right, the dark red or the the more red red is the ER entrance with the purple, light purple being the procedure areas, doscope, those sorts of things. So we're planning a lot of overlap. We know that we can't grow the staff count appreciably when they move to the new building. And we're being very careful not to separate things too far so that we have departments. There's a lot of staff crossover that needs to happen. And so that's why it's so important for us to keep this thing tight and manageable.
Can I say one thing about that? Okay, this is a segue for Phil. So very deliberate second floor, long-term care, acute care and ED. Same staff that's covering those three areas. So by having all three of those departments on the second floor, it really helps keep staffing levels constant.
Next slide. I don't know. Next slide. Oh, is it Ben?
Oh, we got to let Ben talk. We got to let Ben talk.
Before you move on to the site, is there an OR suite or a birthing suite? Now, I know that's not the ideal situation, that people who need surgery, emergency, or otherwise can get out. Is there such a contingency plan there?
Phil, do you want to talk about the surgery?
Your procedure room is taking the place of the, of what we do currently in the same, in the same realm. So we have scopes and those occur in that where if you walk into the hospital is that OR area. And that's what that procedure room is, yeah. And it's two in that, in that, and not just one. So there's opportunity to two procedures instead of and, yeah, and inpatient, you know, is also, you know, this chemo, there's other, there's other things that actually occur in that inpatient area as well. So that'll all be part of that.
Phil, I got a question. How do the numbers of beds from the old hospital to the new facility compare? Because I'm looking at the long-term care and it looks smaller to me. I don't know why.
You know, one of the things I asked Roy to do forever and ever, but is, I'm picking on you a little bit, is to lay over the existing floor plan so you can get a reference. I think one of the hardest things with a new hospital is everything looks, there's no reference. You have no, you have no reference. So you can't, so if you, if you line that up, it's, it's bigger than, you know, going back to Donna's question about the, the square footage, you know, right now, long-term care rooms are what, two hundred square feet, you know, at the, at the most, one twenty maybe? What, what is that? One sixty, right? Yeah. So that's what a resident lives in right now, one hundred and sixty square feet. What is this? What are these rooms? See, I'm putting them on the spot, scrambling. But, but again, part of the CMS guidelines and initiatives is to increase the square footage because that's, that's, you know, that's really unacceptable. Meaning, we're talking about the size of a jail, jail space, basically, right? Well, we talked about that once, right? I mean, you know, it was, it was wild. So in CMS, Centers for Medicare and Medicaid, their regulations now are not just, you know, increased room space, which are coming, but in single occupancy. So right now, we have double occupancy, which we kind of have, which is nice if you have a husband, wife, or you have people that knew each other and things like that. But, you know, when you look at double occupancy and rooming up and your long-term care, you know, that's, that's sunsetting a bit in the regulatory side. So that means more square footage too, so.
To answer your question specifically, the number of acute care beds is exactly the same, twelve. They're all single.
But we are adding one more long-term care bed.
But long-term care, we're adding one bed. So from fifteen to sixteen. And they're all singles in long-term care, except for one room that could be configured as a double. So the quality of your stay in both acute care and long-term care is enhanced because of larger rooms, modern technology, and single occupancy, except for one lone LTC for that special husband-wife package deal.
Phil, you have been asking me to overlay. We've done some of those overlays, but just to put this in perspective, we think the existing building, the existing hospital with all of its appendages is about forty eight, a little over forty eight. the existing hospital with all of its appendages is about forty-eight, a little over forty-eight thousand square feet. Um, and the new, this two-story new scheme is fifty-nine thousand square feet. So, you know, it's, uh, a little bit, maybe ten percent of increase, but the functionality is just off the charts. I mean, you have the same number of acute care beds, but you have the ability to segregate, do mental health holds. It's, you know, all the function, the modern functions are built into that square footage, which is something that you'll never, you know, we can never achieve that in the existing building. So.
There's things like hallway widths, door widths, ceiling heights that are all higher.
Is that the purple section where long-term care is on the main hospital building? Is the elevation of that building higher than the work center so that they, like the long-term care rooms would see like the view over the work building? Or do they look just directly at the work center?
It's, right now, it's about three, it's about three feet. Uh, the main hospital building is about three feet taller than the work. So there will be some impact of the view from those, those west-facing long-term care beds. We're doing our best to make sure that that view is um, pleasant. It's not, uh, you know, a fish cannery across the road, um, with, you know, steel siding, that sort of stuff, so.
So, um, with seventy-eight thousand square feet between the work building and the main hospital, proposed up the square footage and forty-eight thousand square feet in the old hospital. And then, um, is that going to be able to be staffed with the same amount of people? As far as maintenance and, and the nurses, et cetera? I mean, is that the plan?
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I'm not adding more staff. You know, we might have a, a need for facilities or something, but, or, you know, um, staff here and there, but there's not, that's just to give you perspective, when I went live with, uh, a gnome, at three floors, three times the square footage, we added a hundred new people and I, I, I don't want to relive that ever again. So that is, that is a hard thing to do. There's two reasons. One, you know, you have a staffing package where we don't have that kind of thing here. But two is it, it actually takes away the collegialness of the facility, you know, like all of a sudden it becomes something different. And, you know, that's, you know, when Petersburg and rural hospitals, that's really important when you're working together, closely together. So even if you had funding, I would be opposed to it, you know?
So we, we put together a work package or a, a work plan for this excavation. And we divided it up into the four phases there. Um, just big picture, we're about eighty-seven thousand cubic yards of material coming out of there and fifty-three going back in. And so we, we're just about perfect on phase one. I think Sig dug till twelve-twenty-two. And, you know, there's another slide coming here that shows exactly what's been excavated so far. And I projected that we'd get started again two-fifteen. Overall, Sig gave us a ninety-day projected schedule to dig that. And I just did some numbers yesterday. In nine, the last nine days that Sig was digging, he did nine hundred yards a day. And that wasn't really optimal weather conditions, so. When they can dig, they can make a lot of ground, so. Um, this also shows the difference of what's not being done up to Excel Street right now. And this is the, you know, four-point-nine-eight acres that we've been talking about for a while.
So phase four is out, that's the entry onto Hogg and Drive, around the airport, the road to the airport?
Correct.
Okay, not picturing it now.
Yep.
And so all four of those phases are going to be completed in this, uh, earthwork?
That's correct, yeah. We'll still be digging up in phase three when we're actually doing the work in the work area. That's why the work acronym is so awesome. But, um, we also, all the utilities, we mentioned earlier, you asked a question about utilities. The utilities for the work building are included in the number that we have now. It's the hospital utilities that
I've been thinking about that, how are we going to operate a
Yeah.
work building?
The sinks will work.
Utilities.
If I could mention, one of the important things that we're doing with the work building is the utilities that we're putting in for water, sewer and stormwater will just be merely extended to the hospital building. They're big enough, they will serve the entire project and we'll just be extending off of those. The only one that we'll have to bring in, uh, specifically for the hospital will be the electrical service. And we're working with Carl to make sure that we do that in the most effective way. Um, he's, you know, we're balancing the loads, um, in Petersburg on that one, but um, the rest of them are all going to be, as part of the work, we'll just, we won't have to go out into those surrounding streets again. It'll be all done in the first phase.
Just connect to them and
Yep.
On Joe, on Joe, on the west side there. Yeah, this is one of the drone pictures that our surveyor took of the excavation. And, um, ironically, and you, you folks probably remember the thirty-five, sixty-five split for the work and hospital. They, they dug that just about exactly there on the, on the right-hand side. So they followed, we, we've got that line marked out in the, in the field. Um, so you can see the lighter color is the import shot rock. And the outside is a combination of groundwater and, uh, the bottom of the muskeg. And right, basically in the middle of the, of the plan, there's a orange excavator. That bedrock that we found is shown there to the, to the right of that a little.
That bedrock, is that going to have to be drilled and shot or?
It is, yeah, yeah. Uh, there's a retaining wall, concrete retaining wall that extends across the back of the, both the hospital, the loading dock and the work building. We are taking advantage of that bedrock and simplifying that retaining wall. And also rerouting some of the utilities, uh, to get around that. But, you know, taking the, the least amount out as we can. And the blasting plan we should have in a week or two weeks before that it's done. A consultant does that and then Sig's in his crew does the work.
Won't have to move that rock very far to make it part of the fill, I guess.
Exactly. Uh, this is another drone shot that shows the excavation and then with the buildings um, colored there. And that's where you can see the retaining wall that I was referring to. At the top of the page, it's going to extend basically from the angle point in the hospital all the way to the west, to the work building. Questions specifically on the site work so far?
All right, any other questions before we move on to last part? Which, uh, Jason, you're going to have to do some entertaining, I think.
Yeah, did we have that coffee? I thought we ordered.
Got any drone shots?
There we go. Yeah, I got, I took some pictures of the pit the other day, but you guys got some good pictures there, so. Yeah. We ready to go?
Yeah, maybe give a little of your background too, Jason, so people understand that, your perspective.
Yeah, just for everybody that might not know much about me. I, I've been working in rural healthcare now for over twenty-eight years, specifically just rural hospitals. And I started in nineteen ninety-six. They came out with the Critical Access Hospital Program. They, they had a precursor to it. It's called EHPH. Um, and that came out in about nineteen ninety-eight, uh, and went into effect in, in the year two thousand. And so all of the hospitals that I worked with over the course of my career, for the most part, have been critical access hospitals. I've worked with a few that are sole community providers, which is the next step up. But I very much understand the Critical Access Hospital Program and, and how i- it was designed to ensure that there's hospitals and clinics in rural communities and to preserve them over time. It's been tipped away at a little bit, uh, over the last five, eight years. Um, you know, certainly Medicare and Medicaid are concerned about the baby boomers and are trying to cut back on some of that, but, uh, just, I think that's what he wanted to share is, is that I, you know, I, I do have a very extensive understanding of course of my career, I've worked with probably fifty hospitals, which is, you know, I mean, it's uncommon. Most hospital administrators over the course of their entire career might work in five or eight hospitals if they move around quite a bit. But being a consultant and different things, it's allowed me to visit lots of different facilities and it's really helped me to see best practices, what works and what doesn't work, uh, in, in all aspects of rural healthcare, so. In addition to my, you know, my formal education, um, got a bachelor's degree in accounting and finance and a master's degree from University of Texas, San Antonio, go Roadrunners, uh, and in, in healthcare administration, so. Yeah, that's, that's the boring part. Let's get into the, into the numbers here. So. So finances of rural hospitals, I mentioned this in the previous conversation, they're, they're pretty much upside down from what y- you would deal with in traditional business. You have to realize that, you know, federal government created this special program for rural hospitals and their port of reference is how does government work? Uh, and, and, and you know, we all know that's upside down and backwards. So just keep that in mind. It, it wasn't a businessman that designed this. It was a, it was a politician. And it, you know, was truly designed to ensure the hospitals would remain in existence. They don't ever really prosper, but um, they, they remain in existence. So let's talk a little bit about what is traditional business. Some of you may be in the fishing industry, maybe in construction, uh, things of that nature, maybe retail. Uh, and, and in a typical business, you know, the market would set the rate with which you, you sell your fish or something of that nature. And and so you would go out and you would put your operations in place. You would buy some equipment, a boat, uh, some technology, some things of that nature, hire a crew. And in order to create a profit, you would try to catch as many fish as possible and sell it at market rate to cover your overhead costs. Simple, straightforward. That is not how it works in healthcare. So when we have these conversations and you're like, you're, you're bringing to, to this perspective, you, a traditional business, it, it, set that aside, leave it at the door. It's not that way. This, this is upside down and backwards government stuff. So let's go on to the next slide. So when the Critical Access Hospital was, well, actually, it's, it's one, you know, way back when the, the federal government implemented, um, Medicare system, it was based on a cost-based reimbursement. They didn't want to pay a profit to the various hospitals. And, and that went away in the, in the nineteen eighties, early, and many hospitals went bankrupt uh, in the early nineties. And then by the late nineties, it came back as the Critical Access Hospital Program. So it's, it, it has been a lot, around for a long time, but just giving you some examples here. So, you know, let's say, for example, i- i- the hospital is reimbursed based upon our costs. That, that's the key word. People think, well, cost is what you charged? No, it's, 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 it's actually the end of the year when we prepare audited financial statements and you look at all of our costs to run the organization, salaries, benefits, utility bills, insurance company, in- insurance depreciation, all of those kinds of things. That goes into our cost. And you saw on that previous slide that, you know, our budget this year is a twenty-four million dollar operation. And so our costs are twenty-four million dollars. And let's say hypothetically, and this is close to being accurate, it's not exactly accurate, that fifty percent of the patients that we care for are Medicare. So Medicare says, well, we're responsible then to pay for fifty percent of your costs. And we'll send in claims over the course of the year and they'll pay us, but at the end of the year, we'll create this big thing. It's called a cost report. It's basically an income tax return and we'll submit that. And if they've overpaid us over the course of the year because our costs went down or something like that, then we'll cut them a check. If, um, they've underpaid us, then they'll cut us a check. In fact, this year they underpaid us. And so we're waiting on a check for them for six-hundred-and-sixty-four thou- yeah, six-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars. Um, but at the end of the day, we, we get cost. You know, get cost plus profit, we get cost. And so, so coming down there, you know, twelve million dollars is what we would expect to be reimbursed in general. So no, Medicare does not pay based on what is charged or fee schedule. They do for our physicians. That's a slightly different component, but a much smaller piece of our business. The hospital and, uh, with regards to our long-term care facility, we're also reimbursed based on cost. Um, so the, the key thing to, to note here is, yeah, you know, I've seen people come into a turnaround situation where, you know, you know, things are not going well and they cut costs. Well, what happens at the end of the year? Well, if you catch a cost, Medicare says, hey, thank you. We appreciate that. Give us six-hundred thousand dollars back. That, if you catch your cost, you catch your reimbursements. They pay you cost. So you have to go about creating a healthy organization in a different manner. And it's through the mechanisms that Phil is working on the strategic plan, that it's wellness. It's about making sure that we're, we're trying to keep as many people with care locally. Uh, and people really do judge a hospital by its building. There are people who leave this facility, this community and don't get care here because the building's old or whatever, maybe they've had an experience in the past and, and they continue to, to hold on to that. But after a new building is built, volumes do go up. And, and that, that is slightly helpful. But what is most helpful is that we are a critical access hospital. We're reimbursed based on cost. And that program won't be around forever. Will be grandfathered in if we take advantage of it, but they do cap these different programs over, over time. So let's say, for example, here that we build this building, including the work building, uh, ninety-five million dollars. And then our annual depreciation, if we depreciate that over twenty-eight years, oh, would be three million, three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars. Well, between Medicare and Medicaid, uh, they make up seventy percent of the business we do, so they'll cover seventy percent of those costs. So, uh, that's two million, three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars that they'll pay us every year. Anybody want to stop me there? Does that, does that ring a bell with anybody? If we've already paid for the building for ninety-five million dollars, then Medicare turns around and pays us two million, three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars every year for building that building because they were reimbursed ba- based on cost, we get paid twice for the building.
So, so I, I could just add a little clarity on that too. Is that, that amount would then could potentially go towards, you know, maintenance improvements or sustainability of the, of the cost to run the building? So that was one of the big things, you know, what, how can we afford the building after it's built? That could, this could be one way to do it. One of the things I want to point out is one of the reasons why I'm so aggressive and want state and federal not this, not going to taxpayers, but also not getting financing is, is that payment, that depreciation payment at two-point-three million, I could, we could pay that financing loan, that USDA loan with that amount, with that amount. But I don't want to. I would rather have that go back into the facility and then that gets reinvested into, uh, into Petersburg through programs and through the facility itself and for maintaining the facility, because that's a, that's obviously a part of that. So in, Jason, maybe how much of that do we get from a, is, if our cost of our building right now is fully depreciated, what do we, what is that?
Well, that, that's a part of the struggle that we have right now, that, you know, that we, we barely break even from year-to-year cash flow basis is because the, the building is fully depreciated. There is no cost to report anymore. And so we don't get that in our reimbursement, yet we, we still have, you know, a lot of expenditure with regards to re- repairing, uh, different parts of the building. We, we get a little bit of money back from that, but it, it's, I, I've done this, I've built several hospitals- We, we get a little bit of money back from that, but it, it's, I, I've done this, I've built several hospitals over the course of my career, and and, and it's, it's always the same, everybody's concerned, as they should be, prior to building the building, are we gonna be able to pay for this, and then we build a building, and two things happen, this cost-based reimbursement kicks in, number one, number two, uh, there's a lot of people that give us a second chance, and they start bringing their care back, and we expand services and, and, and the organization, uh, steps forward very well financially, and then, and pretty soon find themselves in a, in a, in a very healthy financial situation, and like, man, we should've, we should've done more, um, we should've done this a lot sooner. And so I would encourage you, if, if there are members of the board or the community that are still concerned about, how does this work out, and there are lots of hospitals out there, lots of communities have gone through the same, um, situation. Finally, you know, found the courage, built a new building, and we're absolutely surprised. Um, I, I can't tell you how many buildings that I've been associated with, within five years after building the new building, they're doing a new, another construction project, just 'cause things grew, things changed, and they were doing well financially, and they're like, dang, we should've done this when we first built the new building, so my, my only advice to you is, you know, I wouldn't be so worried about the finances, I, I appreciate, everybody needs to look at, everybody needs to be careful, every, this is public money, we need to make sure it's being handled in the right way, all of that kind of stuff, I greatly appreciate that. Most important is that this is your hospital, it's gonna be here for another forty years, just like the old building. And make sure you get in it the stuff that you need, the stuff that you want. Um, and, and that is built the way you want, uh, let's, let's, let's design it right the first time, that's the most important thing. But finishing up here, so, yeah, we, we build a new building, maybe we hire a new MRI tech, maybe a part-time, maybe we just train somebody up, I don't anticipate, just based upon the size and the services and that, that there will be a significant change in the number of staffing. Um, but, you know, there, there may be some increases in the costs of utilities and some of that type of thing, so let's say the, the cost of operating the new building is two million dollars more than the old building, once again, those costs, whatever they may be, um, seventy percent of that will flow, flow through the cost-based reimbursement for Medicare and Medicaid. And so that's helpful, and then to, to finalize, let's say hypothetically that, that we needed to borrow, let's say, ten million dollars to purchase equipment at the end of the project, because we, we fall short of, of the, of the, uh, the grants that we're trying to find, then how does that flow through the cost report, well, number one, we're gonna depreciate that equipment, so seven million of that is gonna come back through the cost-based reimbursement, and then if you finance that through the USDA, the reason why all rural hospitals you, use the USDA is because they provide a phenomenally low interest rate, and that's very critical at this time, with interest rates back up around five and seven percent, USDA lends to rural hospitals around three percent, two years ago, you could've got it for two percent. Uh, and so, yeah, you have to put up with, with their very specific rules on how, uh, to process the, the construction process, it's not too far different than what we're doing, uh, we'll be able to accommodate it. Um, but you know, if we did have to borrow some money for some equipment or, or to finish a little piece or whatever, uh, paying two percent is not, or three percent isn't bad. I, I always tell people, you know, when, when you build a building, what, what are you most concerned about, and everybody gets focused on the construction, all that, and, and that's important. But remember that whatever building, you, you build a house, you build, build a hospital, your interest rate for every, for every point in the interest, that's how many times you're going to pay for the building, so let's say we financed ten million dollars, if it's financed at one percent, you're gonna pay ten million in interest. If you finance at, at two percent, you're gonna pay twenty million, so the building costs you ten, and then the interest rate costs you twenty, so your total cost thirty million. So being able to borrow money at a low interest rate is, is absolutely the most important thing you can do, and so that's, that's why we're, we're looking at this, I, I'm absolutely grateful, I, I've never seen a group of people sitting over here on my right-hand side, Phil on my left, that have ability to go out, build relationships, they already have those contacts, and be able to come up with grant funds. Um, you know, we have a third of this already done, we have, we have a very solid strategy here, uh, this year to, to come up with the second third. Uh, I very much believe in it, uh, I think it's very possible that we'll get the majority of this through a grant fund. But if it's not, and we have to buy a little bit of equipment with some financing, we'll disclose that at the time, but I'm, I'm confident that, that it'll all work out in the cost-based reimbursement. Next slide, if there is one. Okay, so with, what's it say, with global labor shortages and increased global conflict, the cost for labor and fuel has increased thirty, forty percent, there's just, just noticing that, oh, you know, had, had we done this, you know, it, it's always sad to say this, but had we done this before COVID, built this building, would it cost you seventy million instead of ninety-four million? Um, and, and as the baby boomers age, um, th- the most critical time here in the next decade, uh, Medicare continues to cut away different programs, and what happens is they just, they don't allow any new people to do that piece. And so, you know, my, you know, greatest advice that I can give this group is, the sooner you can get into this, that you can get this building built, and you're grandfathered in in this cost-based reimbursement for the construction of the building, um, the more secure you will be, and you'll have a building for the next forty years. Next. Um, and I mentioned this before, people judge a hospital by its building, uh, and having a nice building will significantly change your community, um, they, they do a study that just recently got, uh, published from, uh, uni- it was the University of Wyoming, UW, uh, what's the financial impact of a hospital on a community? And it's two point two times your annual budget, so for a twenty-four million dollar year, uh, organization, the, the financial impact to our local community is two point two times that, so it's, it's over fifty million dollars. And so, and I know the community is struggling a little bit right now with some different changes in the industry, the fishing industry, things of that nature. Uh, healthcare is a very important part uh, of this local community, and will continue to be so into the future, and uh, I, I think it's, it's ab- absolutely phenomenal, um, and I, I don't wanna be a doomsayer, but I, I do wanna, you know, let anyone that still has reservations out there in the community, why, why go to the effort of building, of renting a building? Well, I, I have literally seen, just, you know, up the, the interstate from where I live in, in Colorado, there's a community called Leadville, uh, Colorado, it's about ten thousand feet elevation, and they just put it off, and put it off, and put it off, and finally, the, the fire marshal came in, and he said, look, I, I've told you several times, you gotta fix this, you gotta have an adequate heating system, you gotta have, you know, safety set, and so I'm shutting you down, you have one year to pass a bond and be able to renovate these things, or you're gonna vacate this building. Buildings do get to the point where the state says they're not safe to occupy anymore. I, I wouldn't say that we're within a year of that, but I wouldn't put it off any longer, because the expenses are only going up, and the great opportunity we have right now with regards to how to pay for it, uh, is going away, these grant funds won't be here, you know, in, in ten years from now, because the federal government won't be able to pay for self-security in Medicare. So, th- that's my last advice that I would give you on that, so.
Can I say one thing on top of what Jason just said about, uh, a nice, modern building, both aesthetically and with respect to, um, technology, um, attracting patients? Uh, two points, so I was the project manager on the new Alaska Native Medical Center in Anchorage. The old, uh, facility down on Gamble Street was originally built as a TB sanitarium, you know, big, ugly, concrete government-looking building, when we built the new medical center on Tudor Road, um, uh, patient satisfaction soared, uh, patient volumes increased dramatically. So to your point, Jason, that is part of the equation, and, um, I think Beddoesworth has done a very nice job of designing, um, a very attractive, not ostentatious at all. Um, if you look at the handout, if you look at the rendering at the bottom of your handout, you'll see that I think it's a very attractive new facility in a very nice, natural setting. Uh, but it's not over the top, I think it's an appropriate design for the community of Petersburg, something that you could be proud of, and that patients will be happy to, to use for years and years to come, probably longer than forty years.
Right. There you go.
What's that?
We hope you'll stop by in the cafeteria.
All right, thank you, thank, that's great, Jason, thanks. All right, well, I think that wraps up our presentation, so if there's, um, you know, I know, I don't wanna get too too long here, but do we wanna have any discussion or anything that we wanna, um, expand on, or any, anything that, um, any comments?
Guess we'll have a, a better idea about the seventh of February, what, um, state's position on this is.
Yeah.
So. Personally, I'm not really optimistic, but I'd be happy if we got more grant money.
Yeah.
Looks like that would be a big key.
Yep.
Just wanted to briefly thank, uh, all of you who spoke this evening, and the attention to detail you put into providing, providing us this information tonight, just thank you all for it, which appreciated.
Hopefully we have a good turnout tomorrow, we're from eleven to seven. Is that the time?
Eleven to seven, yes, and Jason's gonna be part of the speaking engagement as well, so I'm gonna have him present a little bit on the, the, so the community hears this as well, so I think it's important to hear about the financing.
And Karen, when is the formal presentations are gonna make, do you, the time?
Yes, there's three times, twelve-thirty, four o'clock, and five-thirty.
Thank you.
I gotta, during those presentations, you'll talk, you know, touch on the bullet points that you did tonight, the financial part of it.
Yeah, and the cost-based reimbursement and those, those topics.
Jason's gonna come with us next week too, to talk with, and I'd really like Stedman to hear that as well.
Jackbook. Thing is, I just don't think it says jackpot.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the, the key point there is, you know, the, the federal government and, and even the state government, but um, have been re- reducing reimbursements for hospitals, and they have to make up for it someplace, and this is a great place, uh, in, in, you know, the building, so. Look forward to making a solid argument for why it's going to benefit this community and, and jobs and just many different things.
Got a a little bit of an upper hand, because Senator Stedman grew up here until he was in seventh or eighth grade, and he loves coming back, he considers it home, but let's see how he's got a tough battle when he tries to divvy up money, you know, because of occupations in the rail belt, we all know that, and that's you know, where they, you know, they're building fire halls, they got, I don't know, seven or eight that year, we got a couple in southeast, so, just as a example, so.
And anything else there you need, we need to address? Bro, we're okay then, Phil, with everything?
And is there anything from the hospital board?
Board?
I think we've covered most everything there.
Anything else that we have, uh, assembly, or any other? Any follow-ups we wanna do?
Well, just happy in our conversation when I asked about utilities on the earthwork, and it was, no, I was kinda scratching my head, like, well, how are you gonna have a a work building in twenty-twenty-six, or whenever it's supposed to be done, and so, that, that was good, yeah. Makes total sense.
And I think they've, there's an excellent team working on this, having spent some time with the group and stuff, uh, I've real, I've been really appreciative of the experience, uh, that bring into the board here, bring into the table here from, uh, the Jay and, and the, the architects and stuff, thank you.
Now, through this process, I mean, um, there was some concern a month ago that the size of the scope of the earthwork was gonna be reduced for the contractor, and then hearing that it isn't, and then they're still gonna have the development of our rock bed, hopefully in the mud dump, um, so things worked out somehow, I don't need to know any details, so. That's good.
All right, I, I don't have anything else, so if we wanna go home and have our dinners, that'd be awesome.
That'll be good, yeah.
Thank you very much, everyone.